The Culver Town Council to order. This meeting is being recorded and your participation is your consent to participate in the town's YouTube channel. Also, if you have a cell phone, either put it on mute or turn it off. Okay, roll call please.
William Clowder.
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Fan for the Plaid of the Agents, please. Plaid of the Agents.
This is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing.
Yeah, they're very separate. That's okay.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February 24th, 2023 meeting minutes. Okay, all right. Next item on the agenda is Academy Road Water Project bid opening.
Yes, I we received three bids before the deadlines, so I will open them one at a time. And the first one is for Guardian Private Utility Locating. Um, okay, let's see. Just want to make sure. Looking for the right section because there's a cover page here. Let me make sure I go through all of them guys before I read this one. Okay, the amount for this one is $195,000, $195,050 even. The next one is for TGV Unlimited Incorporated. The total bid amount for this one is $226,400. The third one is for Thomas Excavating Welding and Preparation. Uh, the total for this one is 198,127. Um, so we are not asking you to award a bid tonight. We'd like to have the engineer and Bob review the bids and make sure they match what we've asked for. And then we will come back at the next council meeting and make the foundation. So I will get these scanned and off to Midwestern and Mark Sullivan. Uh, and then.
Thank you, Jenny.
Also ask that Mark verify that I correctly named the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Don Houghton.
Thank you.
Please state your name and also your address, please.
My name is John Houghton, 609 Houghton Street, here in Culver. I'd like your permission, as you know from the letter I sent, to put a historical marker someplace in the right way on the west side of School Street between the corner of Lake Shore Drive and the main entrance to the elementary school. So roughly in the position of the the two old school buildings that were there. The marker is to commemorate two moments in Culver basketball history. Herman Sager, Sue Sager, who was, I guess, will probably forever hold the record for the highest number of points, 113 points scored in one game against Run Mac. I think the total game points were 154 and Run Mac only scored three. And the other is a little more diffuse, but it's our first integrated basketball team. We were not the first integrated basketball team in the state because Indianapolis originally had integrated schools and then started segregating. So Indianapolis had integrated teams before we did. We're certainly the the first in our area. And it gives a chance to talk about how it was the case that we didn't even in Culver to be on an integrated basketball team in the first place. Do you know the exact language of the term? That's the purpose of the sign. Uh, the appearance would be identical to the one that Dave Kelly and Mark Forrest and I organized that's out of the Pioneer Settlement Site at Queen Road and State Road 10. Um, I don't anticipate us ever starting raising the monies. In fact, it's basketball, it's Indiana, you know, that shouldn't be hard. The, right, this is the perfect time. The difficulty is that there, it's three feet and six inches away of the exact, you know, bridge. The space between the fence on the school side and the sidewalk is almost exactly the same size of the side. So my guess is that if you wanted to allow clearance for somebody walking down the street, you'd have to put the signs hanging over the fence a little bit just to make make sure there was clearance. Um, in the right way, on the other hand, there's going to be 11 feet or something. So it would be aesthetically and probably in front of you, better to put it on on the right which side if that's possible. Uh, when we put the, uh, when we put the other one up, we ended up with something like $800 left where we were able to pass on the modeling for the maintenance of the site. And I would imagine it's something that would be true here too, of course, that because I'm not very much maintenance there is necessarily. Uh, we anticipated, but we're not trying to make a white elephant on anybody's property, whether it's the schools or the towns or whoever's. As I said, it's not the actual point where these things took place. That is in the Cool Street Apartment House. But the history of that building is so complicated, if you try to put a sign there, you'd spend most of your time talking about the history of the building, you wouldn't be able to talk about the basketballs. So that's the, that's the thing in a nutshell. I'd have to answer any questions. Well, replacing the sign in the in the easement there, um, would it, I guess, face north and south? And would it block, we could be going coming out of the school driveway there or? I, I think, uh, I think you'd probably want it facing north of that, yes. And Karen did an initial, but it was blocking.
Before it even came to you, I checked with Bob and he said he didn't have a problem with it as long as it wasn't blocking. And so maybe if if in your motion, you go ahead and approve it and just approve the general location, having him work with Bob to places so that it doesn't affect any of you.
Okay, and it's certainly, from my point of view, as long as it's in that neck of the woods, it doesn't make any particular difference how far north or south it sits. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right, may I have a motion?
So move. Motion is for John Houghton to place a sign on West Side of School Street close to, uh, interest into the elementary school.
Mr. Guthan's made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. I need a discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is school safety conversation.
Human Superintendent at Culver School was invited here to talk about school safety. So I'm not sure what you definitely want to know, but I can go over preliminary of how we make sure. So each teacher is trained on all the various types of safety drills that we need to do everywhere from a student needing CPR and how to use an AAV machine to how would we evacuate students in case there is a need to evacuate the building or how to take a shelter in place, depending on if that's a weather event or a intruder event or any other type of event where we want to secure the students in their classrooms. Um, one of the great things that we've added this year in every school in Marshall County did because it was funded by the Marshall County, um, Police Department, County Commissioners and then all the police departments too, threw in money, is School Guard. So this is an app that all our teachers have on their iPad devices. They can put it on their personal cell phone too. This, if if there was an active shooter or active event in their classroom, they just have to push the one button and it sends a signal to every other teacher's iPad at that time, to administrators and then to any state police, county police, local police that are in the area. Um, and they all know that that means to just go directly to the school. And then from that point, we have a command center that they've all been trained on where to go for our command center and what to do. We used it once accidentally this year and it, I was in Indianapolis that particular day that a little kindergartner was playing with teacher's iPad and it hit the button. It does look like a little dog house, so it's kind of inviting. But there was a state policeman who was down to Jenny Nichols too, that is a relative of one of our teachers. And he got the alert and was headed towards Culver until we said, no, 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 you don't need to come. Thank you for that dry run and it worked great. But it also helped us with some things in the system that weren't right county wise that we got now corrected because we did that little drill. And some of that is that dispatchers don't have a device that this was loaded on. So that was a good thing that we learned that, um, which is why we do drills. And I don't know if anyone knows, but we do do a fire drill every month that is state code. Um, and then we do tornado drill twice, twice a year. And then we do active shooter drill twice a year. Then along with this, um, the last tornado that was potentially going to hit Culver about a month ago, it was down. We were able to use the School Guard app to send out to teachers because we also found out like cell phone reception in the basement of Culver Elementary is not a great cell phone place. For signal, so the app worked though on their phones. We were able to tell when there was all clear or to actually stay down longer because we got it all clear. And then we were like, let's wait five more minutes and we're able to send that out. Um, and same thing with the high school, we were able to communicate with staff just through a push of a button and a and a little noise message, which goes out great, especially when potentially your intercom system doesn't work or your, um, other devices that you might have, I think they don't work like cell phones. Um, but we do have a plan. We do tabletop exercises. We do that Marshall County wise and then there's a, um, Northern Indiana Educational Service Center that we also do safety trains with. And then each school corporation is required to have two safety specialists. I will say the state of Indiana is a forerunner in school safety as far as the training of administrators and teachers. They have academies that other states are emulating on how to do these academies. So when I was a building principal, I was also a safety, advanced safety training specialist is what it's called. And you go down to Indianapolis and you train for five days and they, you learn everything. They're possibly be hidden on a student or an intruder to what are the different types of drugs? What are the different types of chemicals? What are the different types of devices that are being used for base? Anything that it has to do with the safety of child, we learn at this training. And then you get refreshed on that every year. So we have three people in our corporation that are trained every year on big procedures. So I'm not quite sure what else you wanted to know, but that's kind of our safety in a nutshell and how much we do focus on safety training. It's a high priority.
I'm concerned with the access issue. How many doors are locked? How many doors are unlocked? Can anybody walk in at any time? The door, the, the cap is nice. Then he's an active shooter, he's active, he's already in, hit that button. How do you, how do you get that?
So, um, we did just have, not this during 2020, um, all the doors were re-secured or hardware or replaced, um, at the elementary and high school in order to make them more secure. Any person who is coming into the elementary, for the most part, we believe it is 100% locked down unless somebody didn't shut a door all the way. Uh, there is only two entrances that they come in off the buses. And then there's only one entrance they come out of car pickup in the morning. So we know that there's three potential ones that we've got to double check every morning. But as always, we are on it when people are like, no, that door is going to be shut. Um, middle, high school, same thing. We also receive receiving a safety grant. Um, that safety grant, every year we apply for is to make sure our doors are secure. So we know that there is one that's not closing all the way or the hardware is bad or it's just needs replaced, we have it on a list to get it secured. Another reason of also putting the fencing up where we did was to make a more secure perimeter. I do just need to make sure people close the gate. I'll give a sign, but yeah.
I heard a question. Karen, a few years ago, did you also receive a grant from the redevelopment commission to redo the entrances that we tuned your height?
So that was the elementary. Previously, the elementary was not a triple door entry, which means you have to buzz into one, then you get an office person, then you have to buzz in another to get into the office. And then you have to buzz into another to actually get into the physical building. Prior to that, it was not the buzz in system. Someone, once they got in the first doors, they could get into the office without being buzzed in. So that does help being able to make that. And then we did it at the high school when we moved the office to the now, the now new location. We made that also a double entrance and then a third to get into the high school.
Thank you.
So yeah. Thank you for your interest always.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, agenda is Tim Yuhas, beer slips.
Tim Yuhas. We're here to discuss.
We have your address, please.
Eight one seven zero South 1100 East Monterey. There has been a proposed addendum to the current contract to move some dates around. Um, I've listed the current contract in the left column and the proposed changes in the right column. And I think we have two years left on the existing contract. And I've been asked to sign the new addendum. And I don't see a problem with the current system. And the issues that have been present that have prompted the changes in the dates, there's mechanisms in place that were put in last year to address the problems that came up. And I think by giving the other vendors more time to do their work isn't solving the problem. It's an enforcement issue on the existing agreements with the other vendors that they need to be prompt with the removal of their lifts and follow the agreement that they have with the park and the town on doing their end of the job.
Want to elaborate?
Contract for me was changed last March to go from May 10th to May 7th. And the deadline in the fall was December 1st that we had to have the whole system removed by. And that date got moved from December 1st to November 20th. So I got 10 days taken on the tail end of the season. Had five days, most importantly, taken in the spring from May 10th to May 5th. And we had met the deadline on 99.9% of the project with the exception of four sections of pier out of 346. My deadline was May 5th at midnight. I was finished May 6th by noon. And part of last year's change in the contract was a fee change to my penalties. They went up from, I believe, $10 a day per slip to $50 a day per slip, which I agreed to because the vendors that also service the peers had that same fee structure. And I thought that was only fair that I'm penalized the same way my, the other vendors we work with are penalized. So I agreed to a $50 a day per slip penalty as the marinas have a $50 a day per lift past their deadline. And it was enforced on me to the tune of $200, but it wasn't enforced to them to the tune of about, I stopped counting once it got to $15,000. I have, um, aerial drone footage from at least the, the 23rd of October to the 28th of October that I'm sending daily updates to Ginny and Amber on how many lifts were in each pier and the lifts that didn't have assigned spots. I would go and write down the names of whose slips those were. So I took me about an hour a day to do all the legwork. And I'm being asked to start eight days later in the fall to accommodate the marinas to give them an extra eight days when just three years ago, the deadline for everything was October 15th. We've now moved it to October 20th. They have more time and they're doing less work with that. Now they want to move it again another eight days to give them more time. And I don't think time is the issue when there was an enforcement mechanism in place to fine them for being late. That's that in a nutshell.
Thank you. Amber, do you have any comments?
Um, I just want to clarify that any days that were shortened in the fall we're more than happy to extend it out so that the days remain the same. And I told you the same, um, to avoid cutting the days. Um, I'm happy to go, for example, like the deadline, I think, is October, oh, sorry, November 20th. I'm fine extending it November 27th. To expect over 150 boat lifts to be moved in three days is just not realistic. Um, I had conversations with the vendors, being the lift installers and removers. And, um, at post that discussion, we came to the conclusion that that work can be done within seven days. I think it's agreeable that we have no interest in, um, charging our local businesses thousands of dollars. To me, that was a fault in the system. It wasn't a fault on their end, um, if they're all having issues with it. So that was the reasoning for it.
Not all of them had issues. There's four vendors and there's roughly 150 lifts to remove divided by the four vendors if it's equal.
It's not equal though. Um, Shafers, uh, Lake Services, they were able to get everything out on time. However, on the flip side, they do not have nearly as many lifts as the other vendors.
In years previous, the deadline was May 5th or October 15th, this wasn't an issue. And it had been October 15th for as long as that system has been in place, 18 or 19 years up until it was moved to the 20th, I think, two or three years ago. So they've been given five more days. And it's not like they wait, not all of the boats come off the water on their contract end date of October 20th. There's people that come for 4th of July, they're done for the season.
We've actually had a trend recently that we have renters who are actually interested in using it until the October 20th date. We're moving more towards that trend. They want to use it for the full season. I'm assuming you're speaking on years prior to when I was there. A lot of times people were out of their spaces before then, but they're just not anymore. So we just need to give our lifts, our lift vendors more time to be able to remove 150 plus lifts. Three days just isn't enough.
Their date was October 23rd that they had to have their lifts out of there. There were 86 lifts left the morning of the 24th. And there were 75 lifts two or three days later. On November or October 28th, there was still 20 to 30 lifts in place. So I come back to giving them more time and by, by giving me more time on the tail end, that doesn't work for me because the weather gets worse, the water gets colder. The average temperature, even in those 13 days from October 15th to October 28th is three and a half degrees colder on average over the last five years. And to ask me to shorten my window or push me up against harder weather barriers, not compensate me for it, to fix a problem that for some reason has broken in the last two years by giving the marinas more time, I don't think is a, is a, is a good solution. This was never a problem when the date was the 15th. You might have a handful of people that want to stay till the 20th. But when you look at the drone photos, there's maybe five boats there. Not everybody left their boat. The boats were gone, the lifts were left.
Even though you have the same amount of time to take them out, you want to be compensated for temperature of water?
It's not, it's not just time, it's their, the weather's.
Because one change that has occurred in 19 years, Tim, is workforce has changed. So some of these vendors don't have the workforce they had 19 years ago or 10 years ago or five years ago. And they've been honest about it. Last year, some of them had issues with wind. One had personal medical emergency that we felt was the justified reason for the lateness there. So in some ways too, it's our contract with them and how we're working with them. And they have flat out said three days is not enough time. It seems reasonable to us to go with a week.
The issue could change on the spring that the peers are not released, that a single lift cannot be set until May 7th. That's not how it works. It even says that in the vendor agreement that lift install is from May 7th.
I was talking about the fall though, what, what's?
What I'm saying is you're, you're giving it to them on both sides and I'm not getting anything. When a pier is done, it used to be that I would be putting pier in with lift boats buzzing by. I said, and that's not happening. Stage them somewhere else. Previous superintendent got him to go to the beach, then that became a problem. Now it works great the last three or four years that the lifts are on the other side of the courtesy pier. I don't have to look over my shoulder with the boat buzzing in and that works much better. So they do not get to set a single lift on a, on any of the peers until it is inspected by Amber. And she signs off on it, that does two things. It lets the marinas know, she'll send out an email to all the vendors. The pier is done, set your lifts. This could be April 15th, this could be May 4th. It's whenever the pier is signed off, it's released to the vendors. And the other thing that does is it was happening where I would put a pier in, it's perfect. I would get it inspected. Um, as I'm building the pier, lifts are being set, they're running into the pier, they're damaging the pier.
If it's ever an issue in the spring, I can.
If it's ever an issue in the spring, I can hold off. You tell me to let them start installing.
But it does, it's not a problem anymore because we do one. Because they're getting released the way they're getting. It used to be that marinas would damage the pier and I had to fix it because when it would go to get inspected. List, why is this crooked or why is this low or broken? Like I didn't do it. I can't prove it because my work wasn't inspected before their work started. So the system we have now. Finish a pier, get it inspected, sign the invoice, release the vendors, works for damage, it works for a safer environment for me to work in. But that doesn't happen May 5th. I don't give you a stack of invoices and say, these three peers are good to go. But what I'm hearing is that could be a possibility that we don't finish any of the peers until the deadline. Because we're going to give them from May 5th to May 10th to do all of their installs. If they need the seven days, they're not doing 160 lifts in seven days. They're doing, this last year it was 86 lifts and they needed 10 days to do it. Just that, I just don't see how that system works to just keep giving them more time. When we've given them. 13, 14 days from where it was originally and it still wasn't done.
I guess I'm confused of where we're talking spring or fall at this point. I, I, sorry, I'm confused on the spring.
You're saying on the fall side.
Cause as long as the peers are done, like we guarantee our renters, peers will be done May 10th as long like. Lifts aside, like I don't care what happens or when they're installed, because that's, that is a contract they have with their vendors. Um, as long as the peers are installed by May 10th, I mean, lifts can get stalled May 15th. That's. Because it's not an expectation put on us. That's why the timeline in the spring isn't as pertinent. Um, because we're providing that service of the pier, not the lift. So I mean, if they needed to go in May 11th, May 12th and so on, wouldn't be an issue with us. Cause we met for our contract with our renters, we met what we agreed upon.
If, if all the lifts go in. If they're done by this date and you call the marinas and you say, now you can put them in, doesn't the renter, doesn't that mean he can use his pier? Used it, which means he has to have a lift in. See, what, what, what happens is that in the spring it works out good because they're not doing 150 slips in a week.
Yeah.
We finish C pier, you sign off, they start putting lifts in.
And that could happen April 20th is what I'm saying. That doesn't happen May 5th and they have this, they don't have this window when it's important. But now they're getting this window when it's not important. I might finish a pier. On April 20th and it's released. The marinas now have 20 days to get all of those lifts done. And that's only a third of the system divided by the four marinas. It's not a lot of individual work. And then we might have the next pier done seven days later. So now they have 12 days to set another third. Of the work and then I have to be done by May 5th where they now have a five day window. To do all of the rest of it when not all of those customers are here. May 10th, ready to go with life jackets and skis hit the water. Most people do not use it until Memorial Day weekend. I'm sure you'll have the outliers. I don't think it's 50%.
The problem is we're dictated by the contract that we have with them. So some of them may, some of them may want to. And. I don't understand how that impacts on you.
Yeah. I mean, we're just talking about the spring, which works. Like I don't, like what, how does that trend?
Because you're, you're, you're not understanding that the marinas do not wait until. October 20th, which is the, the renters. Backstop, that's their tail end day. Their boat is supposed to be gone by the 20th. You're assuming that 150 renters are staying here till October 20th. Then the marinas have to move 150 boats and move 150 lifts in three days. That is not the case. You'll have. You'll have people that are done in July and their, their lift might be out of there in August. You might have people that are done beginning of October. It's not 150 lifts leaving the system.
I get it, but we only give them what, a week out of the agency? I have still a lot. And also is this like more of an issue of what they're getting versus what you're not getting? Like, are you upset? Like with, it sounds like with what the vendors are getting, even though it's something entirely outside of your contract. Isn't it like?
I don't understand the question.
Like I've, like the timeline that the vendors are getting versus what you're getting. I mean, it's. Going to be the same amount of days on the end.
But that doesn't account for, doesn't account for when the marinas were.
Seven days, it's like.
That, that the water temperature changes, the wind changes, it starts snowing, crazy things happen. You have a $300,000 pier system. That everybody wants out. It used to be I had till December 1st. You guys didn't want to field the phone calls over Thanksgiving, but why is the pier system still in? So you bumped it up 10 days and we met that deadline.
Well, Tim, and what is it that you are coming?
I want to go to work. I want to go to work under the contract that this board signed a year ago. I have no problem with the existing contract. I have a problem with the addendum that's been proposed that was supposed to move one date. All of the dates have changed. If you look at the dates that I've compared, there's dates in the spring that would.
Right. We're not talking like two or three weeks ago, Tim, where we added four days.
You added eight days. My contract is October 20th.
No, that's the 27th, so seven.
No, it's the, the contract that is current, that is in, enforced today. My removal date is October 20th. You want to take it from October 20th to October 28th.
It just, I don't see the problem with that.
Well, I have a suggestion. Next work, next time we have a work session, Tim, why don't you come to the work session?
The only problem with that, Bill, is that we either get this signed and moved on because we've got to get these installed.
Okay.
Or we're going to have to find someone else to do the install.
The only, the only thing I just want to clarify is that our agreement with you says nothing about lifts. I mean, we don't guarantee that list will be gone. Like they could stay there till the 30th. I mean, it's, it's.
If that's what I'm saying, I can't do my job if they're not doing the job.
You could start the 20th if you, like, if you wanted, there's just going to be lifts in the way.
And we did.
Yeah.
But there were also still lifts in the way.
Nothing in our contract with Tim says that lifts have to be out by a certain point. Just to clarify.
Well, I guess what we've got is a situation where we've come up with a. Change in the date. And if I understand it correctly, you're not in agreement with that, Tim. So it's a fact of whether we honor your contract or.
Well, and he, he requested to be compensated more, I believe, $2,000, Tim.
Yeah.
So he's willing to be in the cold water. A handful of days after the original date, if you want to pay him $2,000 more dollars. If not, we don't have an agreement, correct?
That was before comparing. Both contracts, the proposed, the proposed addendum is greatly different. Than what the current standing contract is. Dates in the spring have moved. I'm not okay with that.
If it, if it were just the 27th, if it were the October 20th to the 27th change and that was it. What would it cost to change? You had told me 2,000. Just that single date.
And we're keeping everything in the spring the same.
Yes.
It's probably going to be more than 2,000 because I now have no guarantee that they're going to have their stuff out of there. You might give me more days. But because there's no, and it sounds like you won't enforce something that you guys wrote into their agreement, whether it's $15,000 or $1,500. If you just said you won't enforce it because you don't think it's fair to them.
No one said we weren't going to enforce it. We changed the dates to accommodate the fact that they needed more time. That's it. And I think Amber was very clear with the vendors that we would enforce that because it puts. Us undue stress on the whole process to not meet the date. So I don't think at any time we've said we wouldn't enforce it.
So what's the opinion of the council?
Well, I go through this every year with my pier, the private pier. But, um, I'm, I'd like to be the first one in, the last one out. And so I get in, it gets put in in April and it gets taken out, uh, second week of November. And I have to pay $10 extra per section to get that.
I have customers that are the same way and they pay a dear premium.
Yeah.
That he wants to have Thanksgiving photos on his pier.
Yeah.
We obliged by that, but he pays a substantial premium.
Yeah.
It's my highest paid pier that I do outside of the park.
Then you could have asked to have that written in at some point. I mean, that never came up as an issue.
I said I needed to be compensated if we're changing dates.
Yeah. And so what would that amount be? For the point, October 20th.
You're also saying it's not just the seven days. Session that it's, you're saying it's not your responsibility that your vendors aren't fulfilling their agreement, which in fact.
Have a work session on it.
I think. What I'm hearing from council members is that we try to defer this to a work session.
That'll give us time to.
Give us time to digest it because I'm, I, I'm, I for one, Tim, I'm kind of confused about. The dates and I don't have a boat, so that's probably why I'm confused. But, uh, I think, um. In fairness to what we have to go through tonight, I think that it's best we defer this to a work session. Yes, John.
Just, uh, just a suggestion. If you have people, I've been on the pier for as long as I've been here and I don't really care if my boat comes off that day after labor. After Labor Day, I need to do quite a few things. Maybe consolidate whoever wants to be out there till October 20th.
When I had brought that up, it was one pier I was met with, it's too hard, too complicated. And you're going to piss off too many people that I want this spot on a pier or I want this spot over here.
It really would be chaos. Like that would be unfathomable.
There's lots of side.
We have a contract.
Yeah, exactly. We have a contract set in place for the year. So. But on that aside, it would be.
Well, we have a meeting in two weeks and I suggest that maybe at 5:30, we have a work session to cover this topic.
I think that's the 20th.
Okay, ready commitment letter.
Yes, you have a, a letter in front of you written to the ready RDA members. Um, basically one of the requirements before we sign a contract with the RDA and the IEDC is that. We, um, send this letter of commitment, the redevelopment commission will be asked to do the same. Um, basically I've outlined in the letter of the town of Culver's commitment to the project, the housing project. Um. The total budget, uh, the fact that the town is planning to make a $1.3 million investment through TIP bond funding. Uh, that the redevelopment commission would do through the creation of the TIP area for bond financing. Um, this letter would be signed by the town council president. It will be submitted with the budget that has that total budget number. Um, it will identify our match, the ready dollars and how they're spent on utilities and infrastructure. Uh, so I run this by, uh, South and Elkhart Regional Partnerships, uh, ready committee chair. Uh, to make sure that all the information they needed is included and she has confirmed that for me. So that's what you have in front of you.
I have a motion to, um, allow me to sign the. The letter for the ready RDA members.
I've got one question if I might.
Certainly, Bill.
Uh, it says redevelopment commission has committed creating the TIP area for this bond financing. Then it gives a date. Is the date only for the creation of the TIP area or is?
Yeah.
Not the bond finance, not. And with the bond financing.
Expected date. That's the expected date by calendar, end of calendar year.
Okay.
That was our expectation of getting that done in this calendar year.
Both, both the TIP area and the bond financing or just the TIP area?
Just the establishment of that.
Just the, that was, that's my question. Okay.
That's how I wrote it.
Based on that, I. Make a motion that, um, we authorize the president council to sign this letter.
Second.
Mr. Guthan's made the motion. Mr. Ham is second. Any other discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, sidewalk program.
Suggested adjustments to the reimbursement rates for the sidewalk programs. Uh, moving the sidewalk reimbursement, uh, from $2.75 to $1.25 per foot. Serving $14 per lineal foot to $21 per lineal foot and sidewalk for combination, which is when the sidewalk and curb are right next to each other. To 26, from 26 lineal, $26 per lineal foot to $39 per lineal foot. Um, and then also for your consideration, adding language. Basically stating if you don't plan to complete your sidewalk project in the year that you supply, you apply for funds. You know, if by for this funds, you must complete your project in the year you receive approval. As funds will not go or some following year, not completing your project will disqualify you from applying for any future round. So we opened the sidewalk program on April 1st. Um, and so, um. A decision to leave it the same or change the rates, I really need that to make.
Rich.
I would move that we change the rates as Karen has indicated, um, for the sidewalk program for 2023.
Do you approve of additional language?
Yes, and language requiring that the work be completed within this calendar year.
Mr. West made the motions. They're a second.
Second.
Mr. Kithin seconds. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Town manager search.
Kind of covered that in the work session, you know, unless there's any further than that.
Well, I did. I, uh, I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Ripley. Um, and. He told me that he's had, um. 15 people interested. So far. Um, however, majority other than the two that he brought us. Um, were people that basically. Were, in his opinion, not qualified. They were coming from all over. Um. Had no experience whatsoever in town management. Um, he told me that he will not recruit. Um, and basically that if we wanted to get out of the contract, that was fine with him. Would find someone else. But he had, he had no, um, he had no other, um, information. Uh, he did mention that he's, um, placed ads and indeed, uh, AIM. Um. One other site in the state of Indiana, something with Indian employment or something like that. But basically. Um, I didn't get the opinion in talking to him that he was really that much interested in continuing on.
What are the provisions in our contract with him for termination?
I don't believe we have one. I didn't see that in what you brought me, Karen.
Look again, the process. Schedule, schedule. There wasn't anything.
Bill, what's your thoughts?
Well. Based on what you said that. Went on in discussion with, uh, Mitch. You know, it's. Time we move on. Then we move on. And that would be my recommendation.
Sally.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, Pete. The ones that have applied through him aren't. What I could see that great.
We haven't paid him anything to date, have we? So there would be, there would be no payment of any fee, right?
Unless he invoices us for some of his time, but that would come.
And if that were to happen, it would fall under the guy.
Right.
I totally understand all that, so.
You know, what do you think?
I brought up earlier. I knew we were coming here, so I think we need to move on, but we need to be very urgent about it. And uh I don't know if anybody has any leads on headhunters uh or not, but uh.
Well, I had that conversation um with um Pete Olson of the Veritas Group. Um. He would be willing to come up um next council meeting and we can interview him if you want to do that.
I'd say it's more urgent than that.
Yeah.
I also suggest that maybe since we haven't advertised in the region, like locally, regionally through some. You know, that we at least do that for now, which.
Okay.
I can take care of that um and get it out. I mean, we haven't even put anything out locally, so probably not a bad idea uh because you're more likely to attract from this region.
Okay.
Um and then in the meantime, you can get a proposal from other services. I think Karen gave you guys a list of services at one point. Um and maybe ask for some proposals.
I would, I would suggest we authorize the president of the council to negotiate a termination agreement with. With um Mitch to be brought back here for approval and at the same time perhaps do a work session. Next week with this person from the Veritas Group um and as Jenny said. Advertise in some um other local locations.
I can do that. Okay. Town manager's report.
Right. Um first thing on my report is the building commissioner position as I identified here um. An email notification right now through the salary ordinance says this is a bi-weekly stipend. Um knowing that we want to update that in the meantime, uh we've had interviews and I would like to extend an offer. So for now, I just want to get your approval to um approve of a s- a salary range of eighteen to twenty-four dollars an hour. Um and then I will uh take care of making that offer and your authorization would give me approval to work within this range. And then we will reflect that in a salary update on the salary ordinance.
Do I have a motion to uh approve the eighteen to twenty-four dollar an hour range?
Is there a maximum number of hours?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty per week.
Thirty thirty per week.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mister Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Guthan's discussion. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Got to date on that. Uh no change on uh phase three and Slate and Jefferson Trail projects. Uh the water project in the north end of town uh Midwestern is serving as our engineer. As you did earlier tonight, we've opened the bids. We will have uh Mark Sullivan and Bob review those. And bring a recommendation to award that at the next meeting. Uh while testing, we don't have back uh any new information on that. Uh for the community crossings grant, I think you've um heard from me on this now and possibly also Bob. Uh the one bid that we got in uh was significantly higher than we expected. We've immediately put that back out for bid with a deadline of March twenty-eighth. Our um engineer on this project from BS Engineering will be on location that evening. We will open those bids early in the evening um in council. Then once the bids have been um open and unsealed, the engineer and Bob will go to the uh. Back back office to review them and come back and be able to make a recommendation because we need to award that bid. Um before an April deadline that that's community crossing grant has. So um that one got put right back out to bid right away, so hopefully we will receive multiple bids. The Park Crossroads Stellar Project is um status quo. You've probably seen some materials arriving in the park. Um but that one will get back underway with Thomas. Uh serve broadband. Um I think you guys have been seeing the flags and the boring going on. Um Bob has been really pleased with their progress and how they've operated in general. Um they've been quite good at communicating with us about right of way and that sort of things. Um the comprehensive plan, I let you know that um I had met with MACOG. And uh they would like for me to continue with writing on that project after I leave, so I will get you a contract for that. Um and those meetings are still progressing with the Crossroads Culver team. We've had a really good turnout the last couple of meetings, so I think that's a real positive sign. Uh merchant association meetings, nothing new to report on that, except that we are moving those to quarterly meetings. Hoping that more of the business owners could attend. Uh no new current permits and then um under the Ready Grant Dunes project, uh we just covered that earlier with the. A letter to the RDA ready committee. Uh and then I've added to the TM report employee retention plan. I've scheduled a meeting with department heads for the twenty-second. Um to work on a retention plan. We're gonna meet at the Beach Lodge and have a work session type of style meeting. And uh we've already done some work on that. Uh this would be a three-year plan that we will put in front of the town council when we're done. And my hope is to get that completed before I I go. Um and then annexation of Tanner Rec Road, you guys took care of that at our last meeting. I've kept that on here because there's still utilities involved with that project. Bob and I had a meeting with um. Uh the uh utility manager on the CMD end. Um and have started talking about their site plan for that and how that would work. Um. And uh other than that, that's all I've got any questions.
Thank you, Jen.
Under the charging station, are you going to address that under your report?
Um I'm gonna do the ordinance for that at your next meeting. Since we've work sessioned on that today, I'll write up the. Ordinance that'll have the fee for that. And just for the public's knowledge. The uh charging station will be free to charge electric vehicles for the first two hours. Then after that, there will be an hourly fee. Uh most of the surrounding communities that have received fees through a Volkswagen grant that the town Culver got one through as well. I've started uh attaching a fee for after the first two hours. Um and that's over the cost to the town. For the first two years of that uh charging station, because we received the grant, we have to have a portion of the charging to. Be free and available to those charging. After two years, the town can charge a fee for the entire time that that vehicle is charging. But in the meantime, we're setting up a rate or after the two-hour session.
You want us to make a motion for what we would like to charge after those two hours?
Um you can.
So you could write it into your.
You can do that if you would like.
I would like to make a motion that after the two hours, we charge a fee of three dollars an hour.
Second.
It's been moved by Mister Guthan's charge three dollars an hour. Mister Ham, seconded any discussion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Uh following up on our earlier conversation, you know, uh course, finally, keep that out for us. Uh there was some talk if we had questions, things like that, should we set up that agreement uh sooner than later? After you leave.
Oh.
Is what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Support.
Yeah.
So we can contract with you uh and not overwhelm you and know how much time you had available.
That's fine with me. However you want to handle that is fine with me.
Okay.
I'll send you a draft of what I currently have, and then you guys can send me feedback and whatever you like.
Sure.
Okay. Department head of report, AMS. Jeff, are you on?
Jeff won't be here. And Bob may or may not be. He's in French, look for a conference.
Anytime.
So I'm not sure if he was able to get.
Terry.
The only thing I have is the uh like the service award program that you were all sent to look at. I don't want approval for you guys to get along with the ten-year program. And with the uh five-year paybacks. I was not with Arlene and Ford about it. I met with Karen about it. Basically, how to get this program started and get it going and. Funding will be changed as next year's budget comes along with each one of those. They were in agreement with that. So what I'd like you to do is there's questions on the program. I have an expert here that would answer all those questions.
I don't know if I'm an expert. I'm the one who's insurance um. I'm the agent for the length service program.
Would you identify yourself again, please?
I am Walter Cook. W one ninety-nine Broadway, rural Indiana.
Thank you, sir.
Four one zero. So I am the agent for B F I S, which takes care of length of service award programs in the state of Indiana. So if a fire department wherever in the state would want one, they would have to go through my office. We've met several times over the phone. I came up a couple of weeks ago, met with the department, with the trustee, you know, the parent. Um and if anybody has questions from the paperwork that you did receive, I am here to answer any and all questions.
If uh a fireman. Who's had more than ten years on, who would it in theory be vested? Is that correct?
That is correct. And just to let you know, we've set that at five, it it usually is five years.
Oh.
We take that to ten years. I am also a volunteer firefighter for thirty-four years. And I have been in the fire service and seen firefighters come and go, so that's why we like investing that ten years.
Yeah. Um. When they. If they leave the uh fire service. And they're already vested. Then they would draw that when they turn sixty-five. Is that correct? But they don't have to work an additional. While we're, I I noticed that it was uh set so much per year for the first ten years. Uh for the payment.
It's set for thirty years. So if you put for thirty, the maximum amount we'll pay is a maximum of thirty years of fire service. In in the fire service itself qualifying for these points. So there is a qualification for all firefighters in order to receive. A year of service, okay? Like I said, I have thirty-four years in the fire service. I might only have twenty-five in my length of service award program. Because I didn't answer fire calls, do trainings, you know.
Okay, yeah.
It's designed for the department and for the area. Okay, so it's not a specific that we say you must do this, you must do that. It's it's as a board, it's as a department that sets these rules.
Out. My question was basically on the first ten years that that our payments. Does it drop substantially after that?
Yeah.
And that amount would cover. Any of the current firemen that met the uh. Certification or the information that is required.
It it would be five years of the program that we're looking at because. My opinion, you do ten years, some of the guys are gonna be retiring, this amount pains about the ten years. So it'd be five years of payback. Well, and then at that rate of what it's set at this day, that's dependent on how many firemen. Um it will drop from thirty-eight thousand to eleven thousand dollars.
Right.
Rare, you know, round numbers. So for five years, we're gonna pay thirty-eight thousand dollars for all the catch-up. And then after that, five years. And depending on how many guys are on the apartment, how many people stay that are up in the, you know, up in the years or coming on.
Right.
That number is gonna fluctuate as to what we pay, but it's not gonna be.
It's the same amount as what.
Exactly.
I know the the first ten years, you're basically paying a catch-up.
That's exactly five years.
Five years.
And all be paid.
Okay.
Joyce, uh well, I'm sorry, Sally.
Well, my only concern was I didn't want somebody to get, end up getting left out because our payments had not been, you know. So they're they're covered. You've got one guy that's like sixty-two. He could draw at sixty-five if he retired from the service, correct?
Correct. I will.
Yet.
I have, oh. All firefighters can stay on the department if their requirements allow them to. They can be a firefighter for until they're ninety.
Right.
The length of.
But if they chose to retire. Yeah. If they chose to retire, even though that the five years had not. Of us doing the pay payback or the.
You're saying if we only do it for three years and payback for three years inside.
And he reti- no, he retires, you know, we don't, he doesn't lose anything, is my. Yeah, that's all I was concerned about.
That for his ten years of service.
Joyce, you had something?
Yes, Joyce Gresen, one five nine nine five, State Row ten. First of all, I'd like to um tell Terry, I think you did a great job finding this kind of a hybrid. Program that is that we can have a choice to look at. Appreciate your work on that. Um my question in the documentation, I did not see um. Exposure of liability at the termination of the plan. Should we discontinue a volunteer fire department and go to a paid paid fire department? What would be our liability at that point for this plan?
We'll say that no liability. My department, our fire department, is a combination fire department. Terry, we were one of the largest voluntary fire departments in the state. About a hundred and five, hundred and five firefighters. Um I we've, I've shut down three plans so far. So the liability, there's necessarily no liability. It's whatever is in the funds is going to go to the firefighter. Okay, so if we change, if my department changes to a career department. The members that are there, their time will be frozen. Okay, so we are estimating that every firefighter with inside the department is going to receive thirty years in the fire service. That's where that number is coming from, okay? You put that money aside. When we would shut down a plan, if I only had two years inside the fire service, even though there's a ten-year vesting program. I would receive funds towards my two years since I was never able to make it to my ten vesting. Okay, so every firefighter would receive some type of compensation. There would be actuaries involved of seeing how much money we have, how many years, you know, it goes to age, it goes to how many years in the fire service, this, that, and the other thing. So liability wise, it really isn't. It's just the actuarially numbers coming back to the fire department, coming back to the town, coming back to the trustee of. This is what said firefighters are gonna receive because the plant is gonna be shut down.
Could that be spelled out in our documentation so that we know that that's the procedure should that happen? Okay, so.
This is just a quote currently. This is just a quote. Once we get into the phase of adopting it. When going through that procedure, there is gonna be a stack of stuff and I will just make a note to the the company saying this language, is it or is it not with inside? It's in the, it's in the body of the the document. Once we solidify it, it's just how it reads and where is it going to be so we can show.
Can that payout to the firefighters, would it be within um a year's time of the termination of that plant? Or would it be at at some rate, Jean, age sixty-five?
It would be a limit, it would be within a year. Mind you, we have actuarial numbers, this, that, and the other. Everyone would receive a a lump sum distribution. Of what is in the plan, what their desired number of years they had in the fire service. Towards what they were supposed to receive at age thirty.
Okay, thank you.
And I think just to be clear for Terry's sake. And I think just to be clear for Terry's sake. If if you approve of going into this plan, you're approving of. We had budgeted fifteen thousand to start with. Obviously, Terry had explained that. If it's thirty-eight thousand for these first five, each year for the first five years, we're going to have to make up that difference somewhere. But you're also basically saying we will budget this for the next four years in the fire department because. This is a new thing, um, which by the way, I fully support. I think it's a great thing because it is, this is. Call you retention, it's a volunteer retention in some ways. Um, and it it gives these guys who have volunteered all this time and made. Safety and personal sacrifices, at least some kind of retirement stipend, and many of these guys are self-employed or. You know, don't have uh an opportunity to be enrolled in, say, four O one K or four O one D or whatever the case is. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear to them.
Marlene, you have a thing you want to add?
Yeah, I do. I have a question. Uh, we talked about the finances, the thirty-eight thousand, we take fifteen thousand off of that. Which leaves about twenty-four thousand dollars round figures for the first year or for, yeah, for each year that we would be splitting between us. Um, we asked Terry if the um. If we have anything left over in the budget, like this year. Uh, we didn't have a lot of repairs and there was like thirty-seven thousand dollars that. That the firemen didn't spend and that went back into the general fund. Can we use that uh to go towards that uh thirty-eight thousand dollars so that. Uh, you know, and I don't know if we can pay that off earlier, if we have, you know, so that maybe, you know, if we have budgeted. You know, forty thousand dollars for repairs and we only spent twelve, you know, and we've got that extra money left. Can we go ahead and apply that towards the thirty-eight thousand for next year? Uh, so maybe we can get it paid off in three years instead of five years. So we can get down to that instead of it going back into the general fund and then we split the general fund, you know. Um, get it paid off earlier. Um, we also, I think Terry has talked to his firemen. Uh, about perhaps because the budget's already done for this year. Uh, and we have to come up with that extra twelve thousand dollars apiece. Uh, if we took that twenty-four thousand and split it three ways, would the firemen be willing to. Help us out this year so that we don't have to do additional appropriations? Maybe we can uh find it within the budget. To pay pay that extra this year since not. You know, we don't have the twenty-four thousand dollars extra budgeted for this year. And then next year, when or in July, when we start the new budget, uh, then we can put it in there. But um. Those were some of the questions that my board had and other than those, uh. I think they all agree that it was a good plan.
I mentioned on the appropriation, that's that's more on the council side and on the on the trustee side, but. At any point in time, I I mentioned it when I met with the firefighters and everything else, I did have a a fire department that had a landfill by them. They were receiving around two hundred fifty thousand dollars from the landfill towards the fire service. They were going to apply a hundred thousand dollars straight up and start the plan that way and then have that minimal. Allotment moving forward. So at any time, you could add money into this plan. Um, to shore up the shortfall or the money that we are going back to the firefighter's time.
Yeah. Well, it sounds like a good plan to me. What I hear of it.
So do I hear a motion to approve the plan?
I'll make a motion to approve. The the plan for the fire.
Mr. Terry move makes the motion. Mister West seconds. May you other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion passes.
Yeah, well, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, you know, uh. Anything that is left over in the budget for the next four years, we could apply to. That payment so we can hopefully get it paid off earlier. And then we can cut the budget back to.
That purpose, well, what happens is in our budget, a lot of times when we have an upsey, it's expensive. It's hard to plan for expensive like that. We don't know what's it going to cost, ten thousand, twenty thousand, thirty thousand dollars. So we budget money. To try to cover that, but we don't have to come up. But last year, we were very fortunate and did not have that. And I can't say that again, you know, this year that that's going to be that. So your budget looks a lot better than what it is. Oh, they're giving us back money. Well.
The one oops.
Years in past, it hasn't been that way.
The one oops was paid by the the company that did it, so, you know.
I would suggest we look at that and for the end of the year, when we look at whether there's actually a um. I'm spent funds in that um in the budget or make people.
Okay. Wayne, are you on?
Do you have one, one thing that I'm talking, Karen, this this player, you're talking about. School safety, uh, I attended a uh active shooter at CMA this afternoon. Uh, the county. Came in and did an active shooter thing. It was very informative to me and them. We learned a lot. It was about an hour. A lot of good feedback. She was talking about her program for the students. They have one set up over there that each student. Push the button, boom, you see that the kids okay and everything. It was very, very, very well done.
Thank you. Arc.
Nothing from you.
Okay. Clerk's report.
Just have one claim over twenty thousand dollars to figure approval to B S engineering, twelve thousand, one hundred seventy dollars. That's for engineering, I'm looking at wiping projects.
I have a motion to approve the claim over twenty-five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Excellent move by your Mister Guthan, second by Mister West. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
You got them about two earlier, but there we had a request for sewer. Uh, forgiveness uh from a resident at five twenty-two South Main Street. Um, the request is a refund or a credit of six hundred and six dollars and twenty-seven cents. The pipe broke um in a dirt cross space under the house and so the water did not enter the sewer system. And Bob Porter did confirm that.
How much was that for again, Karen?
Six hundred and six dollars and twenty-sevens.
Move that we automatically. With the six hundred.
Six twenty-seven.
Six twenty-seven.
Six oh six twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. For the water leak that not in the sewer.
Second.
Then moved by Mister West, second by Mrs. Miss Rocharty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Just to, that did, we're not crediting them, the water that was leaked, it's just the sewer force. So just to. Um, last meeting, I provided a copy of the annual financial report that I submitted to stateful accounts. Um, it was reviewed by Mister Pudge and required to my submitting, but um. One of my internal controls is to have a motion from you all that you all approve it. Um, because I am still able to go in and make changes, but um. Just if I can have a motion to approve that report that I provided to you last month or last meeting.
It's been moved by Mister Ham. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Mister Sherry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
And on the um line of finances, uh, usually by the time of year, we've had a board of finance meeting and this board, this year has been exceptionally. Um, not normal. And so uh I would ask that. Council meeting, I understand also that you you want to have a work session too on the peers, so um. If you wanted to do the work session first and then I probably need fifteen minutes to take care of what I need to. So do you want to just set the time for that? That work session now so that I can go ahead and advertise it?
Fine with me. I don't know how everybody else feels.
I'm fine, but I'm.
We're going to do, we're going to do a work session also on the um. Town manager recruitment or we talked about another work session, I thought we said.
Um. We couple it up if you want.
Always wonder if we need to do that one sooner.
Yeah, I want to keep that rolling personally.
I wouldn't mind if you did the peer sooner too, if you're going to do that.
Yeah.
Well, then we're going to do that at the same time.
Yeah.
Do we have time, Karen, to publish for next, what day next week?
The earliest you can have a meeting is um Friday. Like this comes Friday, so I just need forty-eight hours.
Okay. We could do it, I mean.
I can do Friday, Friday doesn't bother me.
I can do Friday. What's the date?
Fourteen, Friday would be seventeen.
I think I can, yeah, I think I'm okay.
You be here Friday then? Two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Thank you.
Two o'clock, Friday work session then?
So that's the discuss the peers. Is that also to take care of the town manager?
I thought we were, yeah, I thought we were going to invite the person from the. Earlier's group already considered their proposal.
I can contact them and see.
Maybe, maybe can.
Yeah, maybe it can.
Next week.
Are we going to be participating like phone or something like that?
So we give all three topics.
Yeah. Very good. There's a. Okay, good.
Just to let you know, there is an AIM roundtable coming up on April sixth that you would like to participate. You should have gotten an uh email about it as well as a invitation. If that's something you want to do, um, please let me know as soon as possible. Um. And then I did attend last week, I attended the legislative dinner down in Indianapolis. It was um. Covered in a number of topics. That was Senator. Uh, Donato, who is no longer our senator, but um.
Karen, on the A, on the A one, can you do one registration that we all, we're piggyback off of that here?
Yes.
Okay.
That was the idea.
Okay, yeah. Okay, was that the same one you already mentioned?
Yes, yeah.
Was that two or two thirty?
I heard two. Do you want it at two thirty?
No, I just said anything. I didn't know what I was. We've got three items on the agenda there on on that whole session, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
We'll do the peers first.
Okay.
Oh, okay, so I think you guys are talking two different things to the, this is a dinner that I'm talking about. You guys are talking about the AIM webinar.
Yes, yes, sorry. Yes.
So do you want me to sign up for that webinar?
I will participate in it.
I will. Yeah, I will too.
So.
Okay.
And I'll bring my laptop in here and we'll do it. On the uh big screen.
And y'all are sitting in opposite ends of the corner, corners of the room and no discussion between the two of you, so I've got to, is it at the meeting?
We'll have duct tape on our mouths.
I want to be careful with that.
Yeah, yeah. Can we do that in here?
That's what I was just saying, you guys want it on the big screens, maybe needs to bring in their computer. Yes.
Anything else, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have an attorney tonight, so. Next item on the agenda is utility shut-off ordinance violation. Anyone in the room? Anyone online? Hearing none? Citizen input, anybody online for citizen input? Hearing none? Open to the room. Yes, sir.
East State Street. Uh, probably won't get an answer for music night, but I'd like it maybe addressed at the work session. It was brought up that the um contract with the. Vendors, meaning the marinas that install the boat lifts. Um, having their contract that they will credit the town fifty dollars per day. Or each lift that's not removed. Um, Mr. Yuha said that um. According to his analysis of the number of lifts that were left in past the uh obligation date. With some eighty lifts, um, that's a substantial amount of money, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for a day. So I.
Totally. It wasn't, this, it started out as forty-five hundred dollars a day, not fifteen thousand a day.
Okay, well, it was a substantial amount of money. And if it's in the contract, I'd like to know. Who said that this wasn't going to be enforced? Because it's in their contract and number two, Tim suffered a two hundred dollar. Fine, if you will, for having four four peers left in. By twelve hours and he was assessed, but yet the marinas weren't. So I don't see where the equity is there. So again, you don't have this paperwork in front of you as I do. But I'd like you to address that at your uh work session.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Just give me a uh short synopsis on this candy road water project.
Oh, um, yeah, some years ago, we did a, uh, we had a stormwater. Um, study. It's up at the neighborhood of classroom Park and Shop, Fleet Parkway and uh. It's intersecting one.
West Terrace?
West Terrace. I grew up on West Terrace, so I shouldn't end up, but um, so. Some years ago, we did a stormwater study and a few in the neighborhoods in town of Culver have. Very low water pressure issues. That neighborhood is one of them. Um. And we established a stormwater fund at the time that some of these issues were cropping up in the town of Culver. So that was one of the higher priority ones that we wanted to get fixed and because of the. ARPA funding that the town receives, uh, which can be used for a utility project. Uh, earlier last year, we decided to put those funds toward a uh utility project. And that's the stormwater project that was picked. And um you might have recalled from some of our meetings, we had to get an easement from Culver Academies to do that project. So we did like to take it along the old railroad bed there to enter that neighborhood. Um, so.
No, no, they can't be moved.
No. We're just trying to get a a new line to that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Okay, council issues, actions, and items. Another one, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me for approving the sewer fee adding forgiveness. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not fun with. Unfortunately.
Oh, no, no.
Rich? Bill?
Nothing.
Sally?
Same.
I have nothing, Bill.
I'm good.
Good. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mister Guthan, seconded by Mister West, all in favor.
Aye.